Christensen.
Here.
Cunningham. Whitwer.
Here.
Bryan Egg.
Here.
Hollenbeck. Kumbier.
Here.
McNally.
Here.
Can we stand and give the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa, can you tell us if this meeting has been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, hometown bank, and the Village website.
All right, okay, so that's sufficient. Public appearances, we have two gentlemen here on one item. Bob, you are here. Just, is this just an update?
No, I just want to, I want to inform you and your television viewers that next week is EMS week, and it's celebrating EMS week. And the Cambridge EMS has some activities planned, and I'd just be very briefly. On Monday, we're going to have an open walk-in, hands-only CPR. Everybody in our community should learn how to do hands-only CPR. Takes five or 10 minutes. And you can come over to the station. I'll pass these out, and we'll publish them in the building. If Lisa and staff would help me put them up, maybe you have them already. But that's Monday CPR, hands-only. Tuesday, we're going to have Making a Difference Until Help Arrives, and that is stopping the bleed. As you know, bleeding can be very detrimental to mortality. So being able to stop somebody from having a severe bleed is really helpful. And so we're going to teach that. It's also very brief, 20 minutes. And then on Wednesday, we're going to, we're going to do some more Stop the Bleed. And then on Thursday, we're going to have Hands-On CPR again at 5:00. We're going to have refreshments. We also have an ice cream social coming up on Thursday, and we'd love for you to be there. It's on Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30 at the station. I'll hand these out to you. Second thing we have, we had a donation made to our service, and it was a file of life. And we're recommending that everybody have one of these in their home. That it describes your health and your medication, and you list it out, and you put it on your refrigerator or on the door where if EMS or police come to help you in your emergency, you'll have all the facts. So I've got plenty of these, and we've got them at stores, we've got them all over at the banks and so forth. But I would encourage you and our viewers to get one. You can get them at the station, or you can pick them up here. I think you have a bunch, and the library has them, everybody's got them. That's my presentation, if there's any questions.
Not about that, but Memorial Day, you know, we have our big parade.
Yep.
And it's the fire department and the emergency services. Are you guys doing anything that day for the parade?
Well, we'll be in the parade.
Uh-huh. And are you going to be open for maybe breakfast before then, as long as you've got?
Well, French toast, the fire department does their French toast, their annual French toast. So everybody come on down and have a snack or a big breakfast, you know, almost usually all you can eat. And it's a good one.
All right.
So I don't have a poster for it, I'm sorry. There was a banner over the road, I know that.
Just trying to help you out.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
What time are your training sessions on Monday and Tuesday?
I'm going to give you this.
Great, thank you.
Right.
Because I would be, I would be very interested, so.
Great, well, I really hope you do come.
Thank you.
Yeah, you betcha.
Thank you.
Especially you, Mr. Chair.
I'll be down there.
Yeah. And just so you know, this Stop the Bleed is a big thing because, you know, if somebody gets hurt and they're bleeding, there's a way to stop.
That's what I'm really excited about going to, so I'm glad you're doing it both at night on Tuesday and during the day on Wednesday. I think that's great.
No, it is a good thing. There's some worse stuff. I think that we sent some out by email.
I was going to print them off today and bring them down, so I'm glad you brought them.
You got it all, right?
I did get the emails, so.
Good.
It's okay.
Great, any other questions?
Nope, thank you for keeping, keep up the good work, Bob.
Sure, do you guys want one of these to see what it is?
Have one.
I have one. I have one.
I'll take one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the Hands-On Only CPR to the song Stay Alive? We can do that, if you want, bring your guitar.
All right. No, I got one, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Make your wife confident.
Anybody else here, public appearances? Karen is paper, Patty, just to observe, right? So I guess we're good there. All right, moving on, we've got the consent agenda, need approval of this.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, the consent agenda includes the minutes, the park reservation, and an operator license. Any discussion necessary on this? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that has carried. Moving on, reports. I want to talk about two things. Number one, I had a meeting with Gene Kapsner in the town of Oakland. And of course, we're talking about the Blue Jay Way. And there's a couple of other streets in there as well. There isn't anything at this time that has been decided. I'm going to let Lisa in a moment talk about what she is doing with her counterpart with the town. But the two things that are coming out, number one, I asked Gene if any of his meetings were being done in closed session, and he tells me that they're not. So everything is open. And I think we should be doing the same thing here with the Village regarding our negotiations. And number two, as much as we can, remains to be seen, but I'd like to have as cordial of a relationship. We're not here to give in, capitulate, but the town of Oakland is close by, and they value us. And I, I'd like to see that we're valuing them as we forge some kind of a working relationship and specifically what we're going to do with these three streets. So that's the only thing I can tell you. We'll have more at the next meeting. Lisa, did you meet with your counterpart at the town of Oakland?
Chris and I have been talking a lot. State annexation laws have changed some, you can create islands now. The state may not recommend it and may say, "We don't support it," but they can still be created. So those laws have changed some. We also did find out there is a mediation process available through the state for border agreements. And Chris and I had just talked about it, and Eric brought it to our attention too. They will meet with communities that have these border agreements, are having difficulties. It is non-binding, but if any agreement comes out of a meeting such as that, it has to be drafted as a new agreement, so there is legal precedence to follow. It does cost $200 to $300 an hour, depending on which attorney. They have a list of attorneys that they have that do these types of things. So if we move forward and we can't come to an agreement, that is another option we can take. I have tried calling Connie Anderson to see what her perspective was back when it was first drafted. She is now retired, so I was not able to get in touch with her directly. The staff that she had was going to reach out to her and let her know we had questions. So if she is not traveling, if she's here and available, we may hear from her. But I have not heard from her since. So that's kind of where Chris and I have been on this, so.
Any questions? Okay, moving on, Plan Commission. I was, I'm on the commission, and Kathy couldn't be there last evening. So everything that we really talked about, with the exception of one item, will be further into the discussion, the agenda. The one thing that we talked about last night, and we're going to have some more work to do, has to deal with the roadside sales ordinance. We're trying to come up with something for individuals, well, businesses that are selling merchandise throughout the year and right close to the highway. We had something, but it was more on point with individuals and rummage sales. So we're going to continue to look at this to see if we can't find more appropriate language to craft an ordinance around rather than using household, rather than commercial establishments. So that hasn't been done yet, we are going to have more work to do. I don't think there was anything else on that.
I don't see on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Joint Law Enforcement, Ted. And you, Chris, I don't know if there's, who's your chair on that? Who wants to give a presentation?
Dave Wilkinson's the chair.
Yeah, Dave's, but basically we went over that new squad is here, it's up and running. And they were kind of giving, Chad was giving some tours of it, and you can see the brights, or the, how bright the lights are. And they already are working on putting in an order for a new squad down the road because it takes so long. I mean, this one took us a year to get, so.
It's been longer than we expected.
Right. So that's in the works. They did pass out, their commander was here, and he came in and gave us a presentation on LexisNexis, which is a database they use, and I'll pass this packet around, you can take a look at it. And where you can, it's all open source information. You can delineate what, what kind of crimes that have happened in our local area. You can set it up, the perimeters by dates, by particular crimes, by sex offenders, whatever the case is. And you could take a look at that. But that was pretty much the consensus of the meeting.
All right. Village Office Updates. Lisa, what can you tell us about that?
It's been three weeks since the meeting, I'm trying to get my week straight. One week, both Barb and I attended Treasures Workshop, the State Treasures Association. I went for one day with Barb, the first day was a new treasures class. So we both went for a refresher on that, at one day, kind of go through everything. Barb did stay for the additional two days of the conference, came back. Part of the, what she came back with is on the agenda for the amending the budget for the expenditure restraint program. Also, information on grants and the state debt collection process in addition to the TRIP program that's been out there, there's a new program now. Vicki helped us in getting out the bills for the special assessments for Highway PQ. Those went out last week. We did calculate in the bills today is also the first check for the year for the vineyards for their incentive payment, so got that calculated for the first tax installments. We did bill the fire department for lawn mowing services for 2017, 18, and 19. We had not billed them since 2016, so we did send bills for all three years for that.
How much were those?
$1,500 a year.
Per year?
So we sent out for the three years. Continuing to work with the auditor on, for the audit, filing things for the PSE. The state foreign C report was sent off today. Barb finished that and sent that in, providing them a lot of information still as they're requesting information. The income continuation applications for the state that the board approved a while back. Those are being submitted to the state now for final acceptance into that program. One thing Barb and I have been working on over the last seven years, we'll say, we haven't had a very clear, concise spreadsheet tracking system for invoices. So when we assess for roads, you know, this one, people have 10 years to pay. So creating a new spreadsheet where we can put in any outstanding, everything we invoice, be it assessments or regular invoices, keep track when it's paid, what amount, what still do, what the timeframe is that they have to pay. So it's all in one place, so we're not having to look back three years ago when we assessed for this road project, who's paid, who hasn't, who still owes, to get it all on one complete spreadsheet. So we're working on that. The remodel, I have a memo attached with an update on that in the Melster site, and I think we have that on the agenda actually, so I can give you a little more in depth when we get to those. The April election was closed out with the state, of paperwork done with that. I did attend our League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance. Puts on a two-day conference every year for their participants. It's a conference that they pay for, for everybody to come to. It's always very good information, a lot of what-ifs, and we hope this never happens to us. But to have that information in the contacts, what our insurance does provide for us. While I was at that, Dane County did provide a election training. So Barb went to a half-day election training through Dane County. All of the quarterly state and federal reports were due, submitted per diems. First quarter per diems were finished up, beginning to work on the liquor license renewals. So the liquor licensing committee will be meeting in the next few weeks to get that.
All right, sounds like you've been keeping busy.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on, bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $213,695. I'm sorry, $2,013,695.38.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. I had one question, the bill from Mike Finley. How does that work with him? Because there's one large amount.
Yeah. He gets 80% of the permit amounts. So if there's new houses or something compared to a remodel, he has checked that month. And I'd have to look and see on the bill, it had to have been a new home that pulled the permit that is, is more this month than usual.
Yeah, $4,500.
Yeah.
So, he gets 80% then of?
Yeah, of the permits.
Okay.
Permits aren't cheap anymore, Mark. They're not $10 like usually.
Yeah, well, when I built the log cabin, that's, that's all we had to pay. Okay, all right. Since this is money, can we have a voice vote?
No, roll call.
All right, voice, roll call.
Rusty Cunningham. Whitwer. Bryan Egg.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Kumbier.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham, McNally.
Yes. All right, okay, thank you. Moving on, unfinished business.
Can I make a motion to move item 9A up to current business, so we can get the Dancing Goat guys out of here?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor of moving the Dancing Goat Distillery proposed addition up for discussion now?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen.
Yeah, perfect. We can bring the board up to you guys if you'd like.
I know this is going to be a repeat for you.
And again, this is a recommendation from the Ice Mission last night.
I know you guys all have personal copies.
Thank you.
Could you try to combine a couple buildings right away now? Then what, because remember when you first came to us, you were going to do it in three phases or something?
I think it's really exciting.
Good to see you guys.
Same here.
Yeah, it's great, which has been fun.
Gentlemen, can you identify yourselves for the benefit of the audience?
So I'm Travis Hozie, president of the Dancing Goat Distillery. And this is Michael Riber, he's our chief operating officer, which some of you have met and some of you have been working with Mike. As we're all out doing our duties, it's nice to see, obviously, fellow people from inside just start getting more involved in the community, which Mike's been involved, obviously, from the beginning. Sure. I'll let you, which you're going to be doing all the talking. Well, Michael's great, which is kind of coming full force of some of the stuff that we've done in the past and acquisitions of other companies. But Mr. Riber's great, he's a veteran, ex-tanker in the military, you know, college football center, 25-year food-grade plant manufacturer, probably as type A detailed personality as you'll meet. But when you come to operations, that's the type of person that you want. So obviously, Mike and I get along very well because he knows the standard that we're all going to, obviously, push through. So what we're going to talk to you today about is, which is public knowledge, obviously, we acquired another distillery through a court bankruptcy, which is great. And in that situation, we actually acquired, not great for them, obviously, but just a situation for us, which obviously, we came, it came along with the situation where we have more equipment. So we're looking at equipment asset and looking at proposed changes that we can do to the distillery to utilize that equipment. It's great German equipment, which, you know, anybody can come out and see. You know, the public, obviously, is more than welcome ever to come out and see everything that we're doing. As always, we don't run a bar, which some, a practice that Lisa and I, you know, we've been talking about for a while is to make sure all of our bartenders are licensed, like a retail license, even though it's a state permit, so they kind of handle it different, and we've talked about that. The common, good practice is to just get everything out here and obviously keep things going there. So that's something that Lisa and I have been doing from the bartender side. But going into production is mainly, we're a production facility. You know, the bar tasting room is a place where people can come see what we do, know that we make good quality products. But our main focus is obviously always producing spirits. And enhanced, the expansion allows us to use some of the equipment that's coming in, so. But I'll let Mr. Riber take charge, you know, because like I said, this is kind of a for your knowledge and obviously zoning and everything else and looking at what we're doing, so.
Thank you, Travis. I never wore one of these, so. I apologize. Again, my name is Mike Riber, I'm the chief operating officer at the Dancing Goat. Travis and I have been working together for eight years now, off and on, so this is a long-running relationship. And it's been our pleasure to, to take this opportunity that Depp Store provided us and allow us to bring that equipment set into our building. The problem is that our building and that equipment set don't match. They're built with completely different functionalities, so there is some adjustment that we have to do to be able to incorporate that equipment set. It will make us a very, very unique equipment set as far as distilleries go in general, which will just highlight the destination and the uniqueness of the Dancing Goat. So I think that's one of the things to keep in mind.
Did you get the really tall columns still from? Wow, that thing's cool.
Yeah, so unfortunately, our ceiling heights are 30 feet, and the columns alone are 35 feet.
Wow.
So the mismatch is obvious from the beginning.
Is that the bump out on the top then?
So, so this is the overall, this is like the, the full build-out. It has to be kind of looked at as a part and parcel. We may do small, smaller additions or in phases, but this is what the end process would look like. We also have property further west that's already been evaluated and reviewed for outbuildings, but there's some still details that we're trying to work out there. So we're not proposing changes to that right now, but to the building proper, the one that everybody recognizes as the Dancing Goat is our focus. The main thing is, this cupula or this raised section, it's a 12-foot raise to the current roof line right now. And that's to accommodate that equipment set that goes inside. There's things that we have to do structurally and systematically to make sure that the building maintains its integrity for snow load, wind load. Plus, we also have all of the heat, water, cooling, HVAC, air makeup, power, gas, you name it. We got to look at redoing it or upgrading it to be able to drive all of that equipment, okay? So this is kind of the grand scheme, but I also wanted to show quickly, this is kind of what we think the first phase is going to turn out like. And that's going to be the rooftop expansion and a small warehouse expansion, about 6,700 square feet. And that gives us some infrastructure that's important. It provides us a containment basin for all of our bulk liquids. Right now, we, we do like one a week, one tanker a week. We may be doing one to two a day. 200 days a year, that starts to become much more of a systematic approach. And so we need to do this portion as part of our function set. And if you've heard me talk at the Goat during a tour, functionality is our first requirement, maintenance and sanitation, because we have to live and work in this environment. Form, it has to meet the appearances and look consistent with the rest of it. And overall, it has to address all of our safety concerns, because that's, that's the thing that drives us all to be able to go home, come back and do it again. So those four aspects are involved in all of the decision-making. And if it doesn't meet any one of those four, we kick it back. And that's what we've been doing since January, basically, is trying to come up with the right equipment set solution, building structure combination that takes us forward, okay? And if I skip anything, I'll be glad to go back for you.
Yep.
And then this is just the, just the roof line on the current building. So you can see that as these three phases go, the first thing you'll see is the roof pop up, and then you'll see it get a little bit longer, and then ultimately, it'll fill out, and that'll be a total of 17,000 square feet, which is the full expansion that we kind of scripted out in the request. So this would be the, the very first phase, excuse me. And we can do things in a critical path method that will allow us to get other pieces of equipment being installed while the rest of the building's being put on and not interrupt operations. So that's the other trick to this Rubik's Cube of timing and resources and assets. We're trying to do it all so it comes to the end and it's done, okay? Any questions so far? Travis is supposed to be my Vanna White. So just real quickly, you can see that this dotted line right here, that's our current roof line. And you can see how tall the equipment is in comparison. So there's really no way, we actually looked at digging down, and that created a whole bunch of more issues that we'd have to offset, so we decided to bite the bullet and go up, all right? But that's just the basic heights, and this equipment is Christian carl. It comes from Germany, it's all handmade. I actually sent the guy over to Germany to watch it being built, when it was being built at Depp Store. So I can tell you, I've seen this from the very beginning to now, and it's going to a much better place.
Yay.
All right, you want to flip that one around real quick?
Mike, well, that one's up. Quick, can we talk about that peak and how high that peak is?
Yeah, so that peak is 12 feet higher, so it's 42 feet. The current height limitation is 45 feet. So today, when I spoke with Terry from the fire department, that didn't cause any consternation from him as far as heights, talking about what it was, where it was. The biggest issue really is that the expansion will expand the amount of alcohol that is on-site in metal containers. So that's the part that he was most concerned about. Our current process, we're filling about eight barrels on a daily basis, and it takes 24 hours to get those barrels in condition. So it's kind of a bottleneck, and our current system is filling that. The new equipment that comes in is going to be able to do 48 barrels potentially. So the bottleneck changes, and that means we have to be able to do more faster just to keep that throughput going through. So this is continuous equipment. We do have batch equipment, the little pot still, and then we have a big pot still now that is still batch-oriented, but the true engine of commerce are these continuous processes. And so if we don't maximize that, we won't be in the economic situation that we'd like to be. And this is a, it's important for us to have that flexibility. I was saying earlier that we could actually run all four stills, making four different products at the same time. We have three stills installed right now, we can make three different ones today. So having that flexibility makes us very unique and very, we don't have a lot of peers in that category when it comes to the craft world. You're talking more the very larger guys that have those types of resources. So we found ourselves very, very fortunate to have this opportunity. So, we found ourselves very, very fortunate to have this opportunity.
To follow up, Chris, too, Mike Finley has looked at it. This is in our, we created a PUD for zoning when, way back. And this does all fit the height and the size-wise. Mike has no concerns.
And those outputs of whiskey, obviously, in whiskey, right, it sounds like a lot, but as always, what you make today, you don't sell for four to five. Some in some places, 15, 30 years.
So, where are you gonna put all of your storage?
Well, that's what part of the expansion is.
I understand.
And the other ones that are up top, that we're all working on, those are all eventual layouts for this type of capacity that you have to go somewhere with it.
Absolutely.
To age well and be safe and thinking about fire codes, building codes, zoning and all that. Fire department where we know everything is, and those are the thought processes that, that we've got a lot of people involved, but we get a lot of information and then take the right information just to make the best choice, so. And even a lot of this, too, that we're laying out, but then ultimately, this would come back to the business owners to make the right choice fiscally for us of what we wanna do expansion-wise and what the ultimate is. Mercedes-Benz, as you can say, and what do you come back from that standpoint that you actually need to fiscally be responsible.
Well, obviously, we have to go to the state after this, so you guys are the first ones to really purvey the proposal as we have it drawn up. They may come back and say, we want you to tweak this. The codes have changed. As Travis and I have been talking, the codes have changed twice since we built The Goat. So, three times now. So, that's kind of a moving target, and that's why when we ask some people about certain information, if they're one iteration behind, it's wrong, okay? And so, we've had to vet that, and we've taken, we've decided to take our time and go through and get that firmed up before we go forward to the state.
That's been a lot of distilling since, distilling like when I started, you know, 13 years ago, there were 89 DSPs in the country. That's a distilled spirits permit, or a plant that can actually handle, produce alcohol. Now, there's like 2,700. So, the laws in all these states, you know, Wisconsin, when I started, didn't even have a distillery, not one. So, that's when Great Lakes guy, Ray Horse, kind of laws changed, because there was lobbying back in the day to make it a brewery state, and they didn't want the stories to come in because of the grain, right? But things have changed and evolved, but as that, obviously, municipalities and states start looking at fire codes and what's actually going on. I mean, from operators licenses to everything where it's always, and luckily, we've got all good relationships and Lisa with Jason Lee, who's obviously with the Department of Revenue, we've all been able to have open dialogue, and they've been able to pinpoint what they want for their standards as well, so it's been a growing industry, so.
Right now, there's roughly 36 distilleries in the state of Wisconsin with four or five coming onboard later this year. So, but none to the uniqueness or the equipment set that The Dancing Goat presents. This is the ballpark overview. Again, this is that western area that we've talked about. This part is still under somewhat of review. We have three outbuildings already approved from 2016, if I remember right. But we wanna take another look at that and make sure that decision then makes sense now as we go forward, back to the storage question. This is the original building, the roof that we talked about in Phase 1, the short expansion for 6,700 square feet, and then basically the 10,000 square feet. The combinations of how this may get built is, we think this and this are guarantees, and we wanna do that this fall. The question remains, do I do this one or this one first or second? And that is part of what we're trying to get narrowed down, and it comes back to that storage issue.
Sure.
We may do this one, then come back and do this one, or we may do this one and make it one, and then come back later and do something out here. So, we want to propose this because that has to be our master plan. We don't wanna get it halfway built and then have to change it. So, this is why we wanna focus on this part today. Any questions there? All right, we're coming down. So, as you can see, that big building has got a lot of activity going on it, and it's a lot of technical equipment. It's very function-specific. I don't wanna bore you with that. But with each one of these things, we've basically taken an entire distillery that was almost or even on par with The Dancing Goat, and we're folding it into The Dancing Goat. In some cases, the equipment's much larger. In some examples, the pot still is 2.2 times the size of the one we had. The column still is six times the capacity of the one that we have today. So, instead of two gallon a minute, it can run 12 gallon a minute. So, all that means that all the support systems behind that also have to be upgraded to handle those types of capacities. This is our current building and current process, and this is where we start basically changing the floor. So, it's pitched and drains, and it properly holds the liquid that we're looking for, and then also that roof change that we talked about. So, that's why this has to happen no matter what. With that comes an additional boiler room expansion and a little bit of reorganizing interior. But this little room right here is where all the barrels get prepared and the spirit gets proofed and filled. And that one is gonna be upgraded to this one. So, you can get an idea of size, and we're not eliminating that. It's gonna be in addition to. And so, this is H3, Hazard Area Occupancy 3, which means you have to have containment, detection, suppression, evacuation, ventilation and notification. And it's Class 1 Div 1 electrically. So, all those things go into making these rooms code compliant, because we have different capacities with this new equipment that we just don't have now, all right? This is the current edge of the building, so this is the little short, and it'll give us a little bit of warehouse space, but obviously, our intent is that we will fold that into the larger one in the future expansion. Makes it unique, we have two truck liquid tanker bays that go actually inside the building. This gives us additional storage space, but it also allows me containment for a vessel at 6,000 gallons. And that's usually time and a half of what goes inside, so we're holding 9,000 gallons. That's important because this room has four 2,000 gallon tanks in, and so, this containment actually is based on this one, because this is the larger one. And so, we only have to do one containment basin to handle the largest amount, not two individual ones. So, actually, this together gives us a better engineering solution than trying to build them separately and independently.
And this being closed doors, this helps snow removal.
Yep.
Looks, having this trailer sitting out front that they're actually backed in. But also, too, it's liquid in there, freezing, you know, there's things go along that if you just back them in, that way, you can bring one trailer in, drop it, they can set it, hook up to the full one, take off, and then bring an empty one, back it in, pull up, take the full out.
It's important that we're not dropping, hooking on the asphalt with trailers and putting dollies down, and then back and forth, that would tear that stuff up in a heartbeat. So, our thought was, let's be able to park them, put them on concrete pads, put them in a place that they're out of the way, they can't get hit, they won't freeze, and then we can pull them out, and that turnaround is right across the driveway here. So, all of those dock doors can be utilized by the drivers that pull up, turn around and come back. So, we're trying to maximize that little spur right there as much as we can, okay? Let's flip her around.
Last one.
Yep.
I'll get out of you guys' chair.
Yep. So, this is the warehouse, so this is the exact same little expansion we talked about. And then, this is the warehouse that would go on top of that. It's roughly 10,300 square feet. And this would all be one contiguous building in this format. The roof heights won't go to 42. It'll be the same 30-foot roof line, so it'll pop up and then it'll drop back down. There are significant reinforcements that have to take place around that cupula to make sure that the metal building doesn't show stress and all that. So, our structural engineers have already identified some work that we can do on the existing building. And then, when we build this new facility, that will be part of that equipment set package as well.
Lot of details. Any questions?
I do. I have a couple. Mike, you and I met, we went over this. I took a walk-through of it today. Number one, can you tell us how many jobs you might have created by, let's say, a year from now with this new addition coming on?
Again, we're trying to set the chess pieces on the board properly. So, as we get everything up and running, then our next expansion is maximizing that and then running additional shifts. So, getting the pieces put together right. We've added two people in the last year. That's Chris and Dustin. So, as we continue to look, we'll look at increments that match the business requirements so that we can continue to utilize that equipment set more and more. We're not at that point where we're able to do it, because one, if I sped up full blast, I have nowhere to go with the barrel. So, we're actually kinda holding the reins back right now until we get this choke point managed and mitigated, and then we can set the pieces in place, turn them on and run them like they're intended to, which is where we wanna end up. So, this is a long process. I can't give you a exact answer, but, you know, we're gonna look at trying to keep commensurate with what our business requirements are. And obviously, production's part of it. Tasting room, if we expand hours there, that's also another place where more people spend more time at The Goat.
But you will be adding jobs?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's inherent just with the shift. We can only, you know, you can only have them, after 10 hours, it becomes more of a hindrance. I'd rather not do that.
Okay.
It's been like with Mike and I, it's like, it's always kinda like, okay, you got this part done, and then this part done, and then this comes on, and then all of a sudden, we figure we'd be done with construction, then we end up acquiring.
Yeah, and again, that wasn't part of the plan. We thought five years from now, we would have an. we would have an.